Please stand in front of the room.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the budget presentations. Thank you for taking the time for coming this evening. And to those on Zoom, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand and to speak during public comments. And otherwise, keep muted so that we won't disrupt the presentations. Silence your phones, please. This is a public hearing, and if you would like to speak, please state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less than three minutes and speak only once.
Recording is progress.
Okay. So Christina. Oh, wait, sorry. Just kidding. It's public remarks first, please. Is there anyone present who would like to speak?
Hi, good evening, Kirk Kaminsky. I'm Waffle Light Road, and I read through the agenda and found it interesting that the public remarks was before the budget presentation. And I was just curious, what were supposed to comment on? Was it the weather? Was it the Boston Red Sox? Or was it Tom Brady?
Tom Brady.
But I don't understand why the public remarks were before rather than after. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
Anyone on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature.
Right, Christina, if you please give your presentation. Christina, today we'll be making the presentation for Paul Smith tonight.
Thank you. My name is Christina Tamara Vega, and I am the Chair of the Board of Education. I know most of you are finance, but for those who don't know me, very nice to meet you. And thank you for having me. I am filling in for Paul tonight because he did have a prior commitment related to accreditation. But he will be in attendance at the upcoming budget workshops, and we're certainly well represented tonight. So if anybody does have questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them for you. As many on the Board of Finance know, there are three budget books that outline the details of our education budget, including the Large Operating Budget Book crafted by Karen that contains the line-by-line budget items. But what I've handed out this evening is a bit different, and there are extra copies in the back for anybody that needs a copy. And this handout is different because it's intended to tell the story and the answer why behind the Board of Education budget. Don't worry, I'm not going to read it verbatim. But I do want to point out something on each page and provide some additional information that's not included in the handout as well. This administration and this Board of Education is committed to opening doors for the students of East Hampton, which really ties into our mission statement. I've been starting the past few board meetings with our district's mission statement, which is that we partner with our families and community to prepare confident, compassionate, and collaborative learners who navigate a complex global society. And the board collectively feels that the budget that is before you accomplishes this goal by focusing on academic essentials, mental health essentials, and excellence in math. There is, as you know, a 3.75% increase in this year's budget, which I'll start to break down in just a moment. But I do want to call out that this budget continues the district's commitment to improve STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math by way of grants. And this budget commits to fostering well-rounded and competitive graduates who are ready for a career or for additional educational opportunities. I also want to add that this is really the first year that we're feeling the impacts of Chromebooks in this budget. Chromebooks were moved from capital to the Board of Ed budget last year, but because there were unexpendable funds from the restrictions that occurred due to the pandemic, those funds were used to purchase Chromebooks with the permission of the town council at the time. So this is truly the first year that we're feeling the impact of Chromebooks in the Board of Education budget. If you'll join me on the second page of the handout. Eighty percent of the budget consists of salaries and benefits, which does not make us an outlier to other districts. But what does make us an outlier are the wonderful people that make up our 350 employees and the staff. I want to take a moment to recognize these special people and give one example of just how special our staff is, which was seen when the state closed schools and learning moved to fully remote unexpectedly. Our district was up and running with remote learning in just two days, while other districts took two to three weeks. This is one tribute to the fine people that work day in and day out to support our students, and they demonstrate this for us every single day. Eighteen percent of the budget is also fixed with things like energy costs, transportation, technology, building maintenance. And with just the 2% that's left, we're committed to continuing academic essentials, mental health essentials, and making gains in STEM. You'll notice there are no new taxpayer-funded teachers or staff members requested in this budget, but there is one additional grant-funded psychologist, which I will expand upon in just a moment. And moving over to page three. We learned that SAT scores last year revealed that East Hampton scored 12th out of 20 surrounding towns in the area of math. The bottom line is that our students are behind in STEM skills that other Connecticut students possess. As a result, you'll notice that math is a large focus of this budget, since math is the base of STEM. And grant funds are being invested directly into technology education in the middle school. So students have an opportunity to be exposed to pre-engineering and pre-manufacturing before they even step foot into our high school. I also want to point out that this budget will be year two of three for the additional math specialists that were added using American Rescue Plan funds, which were intended to be used to address post-pandemic needs. I think it's important to point out that the important role of these math specialists, because in other surrounding districts, the math specialist role is actually broken out into two separate positions, one for math support and one for teaching, support, and training teachers. Our math specialists, in their one role, are tasked with getting students who are behind caught up. They work with students directly and track math gains through I-Ready and SAT scores. They're also tasked with selecting the new K-5 math curriculum, which accounts for 0.23% of the budget this year. The current K-5 math curriculum called Go Math has reached the end of its life and the end of its five-year run when it was purchased five years ago. So our math specialists are also piloting the new potential curriculum. And once a program is selected, they'll also be training teachers on the delivery of a new program. There have been a lot of questions about what happens at the end of year three, after these ARP funds supporting the additional specialists run out. And the answer to that question is that when the grants are no longer available, the positions are either added to the budget or they're not, and they're discontinued. Mr. Smith has stated numerous times that there is no obligation, once added, to keep grant-funded positions. But the bottom line is that this moment in time, these positions are needed, especially right now, coming out of the learning disruptions that were caused by the pandemic. And last but certainly not least, on page four. The top of page four, excuse me, shows the incredible strides that have been made in the number of students taking advanced placement courses and exams in our district. A large part of providing AP opportunities does rely on our ability to keep our textbooks current. The standard amount of funds allocated to curriculum expenses is $81,500. This was last year's amount, and that amount is remaining level funded for this year's budget, for this upcoming year's budget for academic programming. And those funds are being allocated to different areas of need, for example, the AP government textbooks. This is important to note, because AP textbooks must be kept in line with what is approved by the college board for the respective AP courses. I'm going to switch gears to line item number two for the prioritization of mental health and wellness. In yesterday's superintendent's weekly update, which I know many on the Board of Finance receive, Mr. Smith quoted an article from Edweek. And the first part of that title reads, "Are the Kids All Right?" And I won't spoil the article for you, because I know you're all dying to read it. But I will share with you, the one common denominator in the budget requests that were made at the very start of this budget process was that every principal from each school stood before the Board of Education and requested an additional school psychologist. This speaks to what the frontline staff are seeing in our schools every day from the children within our community. Unfortunately, for those of us that either work in the school system or have raised school-age children through the pandemic, this does not come as a surprise. This budget supports not only the academic needs of our students, but also the mental health needs, and not only through mental health services, but also through the full reopening of our extracurricular activities, which we know children thrive on. Mr. Mosher, our Director of Social Education Services, went above and beyond this year to retain grants that are allowing us to improve mental health services to our students, including one additional grant-funded psychologist. And I would like to take just a moment to touch on the duties of this psychologist, based on some questions that we've received, but also based on what I've learned throughout this whole process. While the school psychologists address emergency mental health needs, which I think is what we all think of when we think of a psychologist, this is just one small part of their role. They're also performing counseling, which was part of many IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, for example, moderate to severe mental health needs. They also provide regular in-classroom support of special ed programs. And they also have the very important role of testing children, which is required to be done for IEPs. And that testing is also required to be performed by psychologists. There are additional items related to mental health support, such as the on-call consulting psychiatrist, which is also grant-funded. And I would like to be clear that services of this nature are not only important for providing children and families with the support they need, but this also becomes a driving force for keeping children in our district rather than being outplaced. Outplacements have consulting psychiatrists on call, which makes outplacements desirable. But this service helps our programs to be more supportive and therefore more competitive, which has the potential to create cost savings if students can receive all the services they need to remain in our district. And I want to let you know that pages 27 through 29 of the thin budget request book has the charts that show the cost savings from these programs. It was a priority of Mr. Smith's, and he has committed to no additional taxpayer-funded staff in this budget. We are moving forward, and we are making gains based on grant funding, again, most notably in the middle school pre-engineering and pre-manufacturing programs by way of rocketry, architecture, and coding. I want to thank the Chair of the Board of Finance and the Chair of the Town Council for the budget statement in last week's River East, because we have a collective goal in that we certainly do not want to burden taxpayers, especially during times of such high inflation. Unfortunately, the Board of Education's operating expenses are not spared by inflation. You might also recall this was stated as a concern when the boards not approved an additional request for funding to be added to this Board of Education budget. But we did unanimously support the budget as proposed by our trusted superintendent. Lastly, while I truly do not feel that this is the intent of anyone in this room to cut teaching positions, I want to state for the record that just one teacher cut will result in 24 to 25 students in a classroom, which is incomprehensible as we transition back to normalcy from the pandemic. As we come out of the pandemic, it would be a disservice to make reductions to a budget that is simply maintaining what has been in place for the past few years. Mr. Smith will be at the upcoming budget workshops, but we do have support here in the room tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you for that presentation. I very much appreciate that. With the math specialists, we've had a number of conversations about this and its grant funding for now. As practicing engineer, it's a little painful for me to look at our school district and where it is from a math standpoint. Have we been looking forward in the future in terms of what that means from a budget perspective, understanding it's not contained within this budget? But has Mr. Smith been thinking about that at all for a few treatings?
I think that the future might rely on what our scores look like coming out of these math specialists once their duties have been fulfilled, unless Mary, you want to expand on that any further?
We're continuing to monitor student performance, and I know Mr. Smith.
Mary? Could you come to the microphone and ask the question so people at home and everyone can hear?
Thank you. We're continuing to monitor math performance and additionally, the number of teaching sections required by student enrollment, so that we can make sure that staff are allocated where the needs are. So at this point, the positions are grant-funded. And then, as we continue to move forward, should there be the opportunity to move them into the budget? That would be considered if the need is there. Or if student enrollment were to change, it'd also be another opportunity to look at how staff could be allocated to support math instruction.
You know what, I do have a question.
Okay.
The STEM program, is there room for that to advance down the road with more students and so on? It's a very good program, and of course, the math ties in with it. And I don't know of anybody that doesn't like the program, and they really like it. I think it's down to earth, and you walk out of high school, and you're going to get a job. And you don't go in debt with college tuition, you don't make money. And there's nothing wrong with plumbers, electricians, and so on, because they'll make more money than all the college grads. So what I'm saying here is, is that going to expand down the road? Has there any thought about it extending down the road? I know we've sent people over to Ram and so on, but it's a great program, and I just think it should be expanded.
Yeah, I think we've been very fortunate to partner with Ram for the manufacturing program there. We do have students who each year take advantage of the technical system, you know, the technical high schools that the state has invested heavily in. But I do think we would love to see those course offerings expanded here at East Hampton High School. We currently have one technology education teacher at the high school, and those courses are filled to capacity annually. So to expand that program, we would have to have additional staff at the high school for that program.
On this, the math specialist, have we set target goals for each year so we can see the progression with the math specialist?
Yes, so given that it was a federal grant that we use for this purpose, we had to very specifically set SMART goals, so measurable outcomes about student performance tied to those funds.
So where do you envision we'll be in three years?
Well, the goals that we set were related to our internal progress monitoring, which is the I-Ready assessment in grades three through eight, as well as SAT data. But we were specifically looking at students who would be considered two to three grade levels behind and reducing that down to 5%, which is the typical of having any students behind grade level. It's not something that we would ever want to see. That is considered to be sort of a non-pandemic-related percentage that that would be.
Great job, Christina.
No questions. I just want to thank Christina for all the hard work and the other members of the Board of Ed. I've been attending your meetings and regularly. You guys have done a tremendous job. I know it hasn't been easy. And certainly with everything going on, it's not going to be easy going forward for us now. But we appreciate all the information you've provided. I think we have a lot of detail to go through. And again, and a great job presenting the information. You gave Paul room for his money.
I think Karen and Mary also. And Karen, you know, with all the work that she did on the line-by-line, Ida Fugger Book. So just to let you know, that was all Karen, and she's a blessing.
I do have one question that concerns the math specialists. And my question concerns teacher continuing education. As professionals, they have a responsibility to continue with their professional advancement. And my concern is that we're taking that responsibility away from them and investing it in paid positions in specialists. And is this a path we should be going down? Are we asking less of our professional teachers by taking them by the hand and saying, "We're going to have somebody else do your job for you now," so that you don't have to keep up with current trends? Just their level of professionals?
Professional learning is an obligation of the school district to coordinate and provide professional learning to teachers. That's something that we have specific requirements that we have to meet. We have to have a professional development and evaluation committee that is a shared committee between teachers and administration to design and implement professional learning. Instructional specialists in school districts are generally in place to support any students who are in need of additional instruction and also to support teachers. So the math specialists don't replace the teacher, they enhance the teacher's practice, they partner with them. They can do additional research. We want our classroom teachers in the classroom with their students. And of their contracted days, 180 of them are in the classroom with the students. So any other days, the math specialists are able to really supplement that work and bring in new learning for them and support them directly in the classroom. Job-embedded professional learning is considered to be the form of professional learning that has the highest impact, not only on teacher success, but student success. So having someone come into your classroom with you, with your students, to solve the specific needs in that classroom. So that model is considered to be the norm in school districts around growing to teacher capacity and supporting them. To their credit, I have to highlight that many of our teachers go above and beyond and access professional learning on their own time in the summer through the use of their own funds as well.
The only thing I would add to that is that what I've learned throughout this process is that these positions are not something that we created out of thin air. Many other districts have math specialists and many more math specialists than we have. So this is our way to solve for the deficiency that we're seeing at this moment.
Yes, and it's not just math. We have English reading specialists across the board there. My question was, are we reducing the duties that we're asking our teachers? They were always invested previously by hiring additional paid staff to take over some of the responsibilities.
I would say no. Their duties are no less for these interventions.
Yeah, teacher schedules, all of their responsibilities involving student learning have not changed with the addition of the math specialist.
Andrew, Richard?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How many students are in the manufacturing program?
In the manufacturing program?
Yeah.
We only have, is it five from our district?
Yeah.
I think we have five from our district.
I agree that it's five, but I would want to double check. I don't have the current enrollment, but it is five students, unless I knew. Ram sets the number of seats that we can access, and I believe that those were the number that we had access to this fall.
It'd be nice if that could be expanded. I'm a great fan of that program. And I don't know, are there any chances of expanding that?
Well, I know that each year, we have to revisit it with Ram. But we certainly can continue those conversations with them. I know that the facility that they have and the equipment has a limited number of slots and that they fill until they have seats open for us.
Thank you. I do have something else. Karen, is there a projected variance for this year yet in its portion of Ed budget?
We're right about on our budget at this time. We don't anticipate any large going over or order.
Okay. Was there a variance last year?
No.
No money left over? Because I know we.
Less than $5,000.
Thank you. No, okay, another question. What goes into the per pupil expenditure? What's the calculation that goes into the per pupil expenditure? Is capital and Chromebooks included? I know Chromebooks now are included in the budget, but is capital included in that figure?
All expenses, including capital, not a large building like the high school, but the annual Chromebooks, a share of the cost from the finance department, a share of the cost of moving along from Park and Rec, and everything else that's in our operating budget, and all of our grants. It's all part of a report to the state of Connecticut.
So, for instance, the whiteboards. That's included?
Yeah.
The purchase of the whiteboards?
All of our COVID funding from last year became part of the per pupil expenses, which is really why the jump occurred.
Yes. Yeah, we haven't seen that jump this year yet, Caplan.
It is in Paul's superintendent's book that we have here tonight that shows an increase, but every district saw the same.
If every district saw the same jump, then we shouldn't be in the same place.
It's on page 32 and 33, sorry, pages 32 and 33. For last year.
Small budget.
The superintendent's budget request.
So we haven't, yeah, so we haven't seen this year's jump yet. This is 2021, and this is 2019?
That's the most recent completed fiscal year.
Right, okay, so we have not seen that jump. It's not public yet.
Oh, no, that doesn't include. Most, the districts all had to do the spending in order to reopen school up for the fall of 2020. So every district had similar kind of spending.
No, so I guess my question is, so the Chromebooks.
I, no one knows that at this time. I would expect it to be slightly less than last year, and the same thing across the board, slightly less because of not having the state funding that occurred for the COVID improvements. It was not repeated this year.
Thank you. So it was. And that is Christina said that 80% of the, and I think it's 85 in the book, but percent is salaries and benefits. And I want to point out, and that's of the operating budget for Board of Ed, that that is not affected by inflation. So those are pat numbers. So when you talk about the incredibly high inflation that we're experiencing now, that doesn't touch 80% at least of the Board of Ed budget.
I think, thank you very much, ladies. Do you mind if I just add one more thing?
Yes.
While that is not touched by inflation, it is contractual increases, so there's.
Oh, it's contractual.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our town manager, no, please, David?
I'm going to share my presentation screen out so that you can see it in front of you there and the folks that are on Zoom, such as they are, can see it from their location as well. I just want to take the next hour and a half to kind of go through the town. Thank you. You're all paying attention. Excellent job. You well passed so far.
Meeting adjourned.
I want to take a few minutes to talk about the town's budget. I will both talk about the overall picture, which includes the Board of Education budget, and at times I will winnow it down and talk about just the town general operations side or general government side as well as the parts and pieces of that as well. As was alluded to earlier this evening, the development of a budget, of course, is not done in a vacuum by one person. As you can see in front of you that production of the town's budget involves the various departments of the town at a great level of detail. Of course, those folks have to put together their budget requests. And we have conversations about that throughout the year and it ends up developing into what, what you have in front of you this evening. It always attempts to look into the future of the community, not just for the upcoming fiscal year, but multiple years down the road, whether that is about debt projection or that's about a long-term impact of employee costs or what have you. It's always intended to look into the future. This bu- this budget is focused on maintaining the current services that the town is providing and those services and programs as well. Many of the increases here, perhaps one could say most of the increases here are costs either outside of the town's control or as we just talked about contractual obligations for, for example, staff contracts and the like. Particular in this budget, again, I'm going to emphasize a few items. One is that there is no use of undesugated funds or surplus funds, so, so to speak, to offset any ongoing expenses. That was done a couple of years ago in the thick of the COVID pandemic. That is not repeated at all in this. Nor is that repeated into the capital improvements fund at this point as well. Speaking of the capital improvements fund, there is a transfer as always into that fund of current tax dollars. That number is exactly the same as it is in fiscal twenty-two, so no increase in that figure. However, there is a potential right now for some suggested use of the ARPA funds to assist in the capital expenditures. But that work is still ongoing. We're a little bit behind schedule there. That work is still ongoing with capital committee. We'll have a final version of that to you before you get to the point of wrapping up. Excuse me, wrapping up your work on this budget. There is one staff member increase in the town side of the budget and that is in the police department. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we get closer to that and certainly when the chief police is in front of you. The other two items that I want to mention to you this evening are debt service. Debt service for the town peaks in this, in the fiscal year we're talking about, so fiscal year twenty-three. That's mostly the work on the high school and the town hall project. The other thing I'll mention to you this evening is, as we just talked a little bit about costs outside of control, mainly at this point fuel. You'll see as I come to that, fuel has been increased rather significantly in the town's budget because of the complete unknown nature of that and the increased costs that we have seen, excuse me, at this point. Looking at the budget on the overall, I take a moment at this point just to show you kind of where the changes have been made to this point. Rather unremarkable in this particular fiscal year, those first two columns on the left are debt and transfers to capital, as I indicated. Those really are, are items that I don't control. Debt is set by the bonding agencies. The capital request was frozen this year as well as the other small transfers that are in that particular line. I did make some modifications to the department budget requests. I did eliminate some items which you see tracked in the thick binder that you received for the town's budget. I did also increase some lines, notably fuel, as I alluded to before. And of course, I make no amendments to the Board of Education. Overall, this is a moment to talk about the overall town budget. This year, the overall town budget is just south of fifty-two, fifty-two million dollars. As you can see, it is often, and as often is the case, about two-thirds of that is the education side. About a quarter of that is town general operations. And you see debt, that figure this year is about eight percent. And then that transfer to capital at about two percent. So that's the overall ratios that you see in that fifty-two million dollar budget. Take a look at this slide. This is a little bit of history. This is ten years ago and this current fiscal year. You can see those ratios more or less are the same. The, the reason that two of those numbers have changed is based on that third number for debt. You can see that our debt service costs have gone up. And that is a hundred percent related to the building we're in right now and the changes made at the high school. Overall, that increase is about two point three million dollars from last year's fiscal year budget to this year. Broken down roughly, a little over half of that is in the education side and a little under half of that is in the town operations and debt service side. Want to talk a little bit about major expenditure changes. There's a little over a half dozen that I'm going to focus on here. One is salary expenses. You can see that there, if you look at the budget, we're doing all the math, you'd see about a hundred twelve thousand dollars in salary increases for existing employees. Most of that is full-time employees, a little over ninety-two thousand or just under ninety-three thousand, related to full-time employees. And about nineteen thousand and change related to part-time employees. In this fiscal year, we see that's a little bit offset by the elimination of one part-time position here in the town hall. But is impacted again by two increases in the state's minimum wage, both of which occur in the very busy summer months when, for example, Park and Recreation Department has most of its staff. As I alluded to before, there is one staff programmatic change. I guess really two changes wrapped into one for this purposes. One is the proposed addition of a lieutenant, basically taking a a current sergeant and promoting that individual to lieutenant and leaving us with three sergeants and one lieutenant as opposed to four sergeants. That individual would be in an administrative role, as the chief will talk about when he comes in to work on changes that have gone on related to the police accountability law. In order to prevent a reduction in the overall number of officers that are on the road, there is a proposal to backfill that slot with a, with another police officer position. Technology sees some significant changes this year. In addition to the standard activity of replacing computers in various departments, those figures roll around from one department to another every year. There are some changes related to software. We have increased costs for some of the software that we use. Additionally, in the police department, because of changes in the law and because of the addition of camera systems, we have the cost of the, of the storage and monitoring software for the cameras. That's an increased cost for software licensing. As well, we have replaced the security lights or the security software that we have in town from the previous version, and that is a much, that is a more expensive software. Benefits go up, another big chunk of, of the increase here, seventy-four thousand and change related to three things, changes in the way staff are using that. Addition of children, marriages, et cetera, et cetera, plus a projected increase in the premium for that as well, that new officer position that I alluded to earlier. Fuel and utilities. I mentioned fuel. That, that number was increased by about sixty-two percent this year, just about sixty-two thousand dollars. Again, based on the uncertainty of that particular market. The other increase is somewhat minor. It is the increase in utility costs. We have about thirteen thousand dollars budgeted for the increased cost of natural gas. However, that is offset by the fact that town of East Hampton has an arrangement, a net metering arrangement wherein you buy solar power from a facility here in town, about two million megawatt or two million kilowatts rather a year. Kilowatt hours a year to offset costs in both the general government side of the ledger and the education side of the ledger. On the general government side, that results in the savings of, right now, we're projecting about eight or nine thousand dollars. Waiting for that number to really settle out and know best. One last item I'll mention is pensions. The cost of pensions rise again in this fiscal year, forty-nine thousand dollars, most of which is to the defined benefit program. There are still some employees of the town that are in the defined benefit program, and so we have some costs associated with that based on actuarial changes. And then we do have some costs related to the defined contribution plan where we're moving employees now a little under, or rather, over four thousand dollars. Total of those, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of the town's changes. If you're playing along, you remember that that overall change was about five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So all but about eighty thousand dollars of the changes that we talked about were described in those categories. The rest of them are sort of distributed amount around through the budget. This item shows a little bit of a redistributed. Look at those numbers. As you can see, most of the increases in salaries and wages, what I've done on this particular chart is incorporated that police officer, that proposed police officer and that proposed lieutenant position into the salaries and into the employee benefits and various other line items. So you would see the total overall impact of that. There is one category of items that does drop a little bit, as you can see, but for the most part, they're status quo in those other lines. This is a tracking, a little bit of history here for you again, tracking of employee numbers for the town. As you can see, we have these sort of little plateaus and then, and then a little increase in another plateau. Right now, you can see that increase from sixty-seven and a half employees. This is full-time employees. We count the fire marshal as a half of a full-time employee for purposes of this, but all this, all the rest of them are true full-time employees. And so you see that one increase there of the additional officer. As we begin to come to sort of near the end of the book, we're going to talk a little bit about debt, as I alluded to earlier. You see the increase there. The first column in the upper chart is this fiscal year, that is the current fiscal year that we are in fiscal twenty-two. A little over three and a half million dollars is spent on debt service and capital leases. That number goes up by about five hundred thousand dollars to a little over four million dollars next year and then begins to tail off over time, assuming no substantial debt increase by the town. Just for everybody's identification, the lower chart shows the breakdown, the current breakdown of debt of the town. High school debt is about half of what the town has owed in principle. The town hall is about twenty-seven percent, as you can see, and the rest is divided into those leases, which is primarily leases for vehicles. So you look at fire vehicles that are very large and other large vehicles that have been purchased through lease. The other side of that is often items like debt let for road improvements and those sorts of things. Coming back to capital expenditures, right now, the draft plan you have in your book for capital expenditures is one point eight million dollars. That includes, just under half of that is public works. Primarily that includes roadwork, maintenance of the roads in town. And then also a big chunk of that is for watershed improvements around the lake. The other big chunk of that overall, that capital expenditures plan is, is education-related expenses. The big chunk of that, three hundred thousand and change, is related to technology improvements and replacements in the education function. That one point eight million dollar figure is a figure that has been revised by the Capital Improvements Committee. It is probably a pretty close to where they will finally make their, their, or make their final recommendation. The details they have to work out are the funding pieces and whether they'll recommend or how they will recommend the use of funds other than current taxes. So that's coming to you. Little bit more about capital revenues, the important pieces that pulled out to the left. That's that eight hundred twelve thousand and change that comes from current taxes. That chart that just went away was, that's what happens when you start your, your finger, I guess. That chart that just went away, and I won't go through the process of getting it back, showed capital improvements expenditures over time. That is the amount of the transfer of current taxes to the capital improvements plan. If you would have had time to look at it, and I will share with you these slides after, if you would have had time to look at it, you would have noticed that in the last ten years, the town has spent roughly the same amount out of that, or rather, into that fund. So in the last years, we probably have spent an average of about eight hundred and fifty thousand plus or minus into the capital improvements fund. Certainly, costs have gone up in the last ten years. There have been blips and there have been reductions over time. But in general, that's the statement. But I will warn you, as I did in my letter, that I think that this is something the town really has to pay attention to. We have to make sure that we're investing in our capital infrastructure, making sure we're finding ways to do that, whether it's through increases in the amount that we move from taxes or it's other funding sources that we find to make sure that we're keeping that all up to date. Moving away from the expenditure side of the budget, I'm going to take the last couple of slides to talk about revenues and the mill rate levy and that sort of thing. So generally, you'll hear me when I stand here talk about the fact that revenues, non-tax revenues to the town have dropped over the years. You would, we would perhaps show a chart and that, you know, it's one of these, well, from your perspective, one of these kind of deals. A constant drop. This year, however, there are two substantive changes, two substantive increases to non-tax revenues. While they are generally stagnant, it does show an increase of about eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. As I alluded to, those grants are generally flat or reducing. As I talked about in the transmittal letter, the grant for education has dropped significantly over time, but has held at a fairly stagnant level for the last couple of years. However, currently, there is a proposal at the state legislature that would call for a reduction in the maximum mill rate for motor vehicles, down to twenty-nine dollars, which is below, of course, what we apply to, to motor vehicles right now. The town, that legislation would pay the town, as well as other towns in the state, the lost revenue on that mill rate change. The state indicates, excuse me. The state indicates that that would be just under seven hundred thousand dollars for the town. We have prepared, that is Jeff and I have prepared this particular budget, assuming that that law goes through, so that the mill rate for motor vehicles is at twenty-nine. We get the grant funds from the state and have incorporated that into the budget. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. The other increases related to licenses and permits and fees, basically, this is the, the costs that get charged with the building department, the town clerk and various other locations related to construction and general activity in the town. Those figures have risen quite a bit in the last few fiscal years. We have taken advantage of a little bit of that increase, by no means all of it. As a conservative way to acknowledge that those costs are going up, those revenue streams are going to likely stay strong, at least for a little while. And so we've taken a small portion of those as a potential increased revenue. Investment income continues to be problematic, as most of us know, when we look at our own future planning accounts. And again, as I mentioned, no use of fund balance. Purpose of this chart is to give you again a little bit of a, of a history reminder. This is a ten, the left column in each one of those groupings is the two thousand, the fiscal year two thousand thirteen. And the right-hand column in those groupings is the current fiscal year under consideration. As you can see, previously, we've got a fair amount more in grants from the state, again, primarily education-related. And as you can see, as those figures have dropped down, conversely, because we don't have many other revenue sources, the amount that we all pay on our property taxes has gone up on the other side. Grand list. Because of the, the change that I just mentioned in motor vehicles, you saw a change in the way we present the grand list information on the summary page that's included in the front half of the budget book. Instead of just simply talking about the overall grandness, we've actually broken into parts of the two pieces. The, the portion attributed to real estate and personal property tax and the portion attributed to motor vehicles. That's an important factor in this year's grand list. Overall, the grand list grew, as you, as you see there in front of you, by about forty-two million dollars. About three and a half percent. That's a, that's a great figure. However, most of this increase, three quarters or so of this increase is in motor vehicles. The, the vehicles that we have all out in front of our houses, even though we didn't buy new ones, all got more valuable because of the new car market. The the vehicles that we have all out in front of our houses, even though we didn't buy new ones, all got more valuable because of the new car market. So, while there certainly were additions to the overall number of vehicles that we have. A lot of that increase is attributed to just the change in the cost or the value of those vehicles in front of our houses. That number jumped about twenty-seven percent from last year to this year. Overall, that. Overall, that grand list is about twelve million dollars, this is where I get my memory tested. Overall, that grand list is about one point two billion dollars, rather. About eleven million of that increase this year was attributed to real and personal property. So that's new growth, because we did not do a revale this year, so that's new growth. So eleven million dollars generates somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In tax revenue on. Real property that didn't exist last year. The other big chunk of that relates to. Motor vehicle tax, and will have an impact on that that we should, that the Board of Finance will want to talk about as we close to the point of setting the actual mill rates. Which I suspect you'll have to set two different mill rates this year. This document, this next page here in front of you is a bit of a breakdown of the overall now, the picture that I've talked about. So there's that fifty-two million dollar overall town budget, there's the nine point eight million dollars of projected revenues that we see. Leaving us with a projected property tax need of about forty-two million dollars. In this calculation, again, if you looked at the material that's in the budget, you would see that about thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight million of that. Is proposed to come from real estate taxes and taxes on real and personal property. The other four million and change is anticipated under this model to come from motor vehicles. Again, that's a pretty significant increase in motor vehicle tax over last year despite a reduction in the mill rate. Overall, we think that the, if you look at this chart, we've. Broke it down, it's a little bit off because of the motor vehicle thing, but we anticipate, if nothing changed, we could do a mill rate of around thirty-five dollars. And thirty-one cents. Here's a little bit more of a detail here, it's that thirty-seven, nearly thirty-eight million dollars that I talked about, in a tax levy, right there in the middle of the page. Again, that brings that, using the value of real and personal property, brings you to a mill rate of about thirty-five, thirty-one, or an increase of seventy-eight cents over last year. The mill rate for motor vehicles, while it is a significant drop to twenty-nine dollars. Is still an increase of over four million dollars in taxes paid on motor vehicles, and that's about six. Six and three-quarters, almost seven percent lower, or rather, higher than it was last year on motor vehicles. So, that's the general concept of the town's budget, that's the overall plan right now as it is presented to you. Certainly, as you go on into the future, these are the dates of times that you'll be meeting later this week. At each of these, you'll have the opportunity to not only talk with the Board of Education again, but to see the various departments as they come in and describe to you. The proposed. Their proposed budgets and their proposed requests, help you understand what they've asked for, allow them to explain to you any questions you might have. And then, of course, you see your various deliberations that go on. It's anticipated that sometime in May or early June, we'll be ready to go to the to the public and let them vote. On this referendum, and of course, as I alluded to, by the time we get to the end of June, you will have done the last step in all of this and established a mill rate. So those are my comments for this evening, I promise. And if the public that's watching has any comments that they want to extend to you. We've set up a budget email address that we've used for a couple of years now, and of course, they can mail those here to the town hall as well. Budget information's online at the website, I'm certainly available to answer any questions you might have this evening as we prepare for moving on. Thank you.
Very much. I guess we'll start with Ted again.
I have a question. The American Rescue Funds, there's a subcommittee of the council.
That is correct.
Is there any date or time when the report will come out on what they? Recommend the funds be sent on, because I think we should have those figures here for our deliberations. Because it might, it might affect the capital budget, or maybe either your budget or one of education.
So, there is not a date set for a for a report, because I don't know that they're intending to provide a. One specific report. I think what they're trying to do, at least at this point, is identify proposed uses that will. In the long run, eliminate or avoid taxpayer expense. The first allocation that they made was for, that they recommended to the town council was an allocation of. Just over eight hundred thousand dollars to to pay the town's portion, that is, the East Hampton portion. Of the proposed re-roofing project at the middle school. Now, there's been some discussion with the state about that, and how much of that can we actually use for that purpose? But that's their intent, they intend also to meet tomorrow to talk about some potential expenditures of those dollars. Targeted in the wastewater system, in the wastewater, wastewater collection system, again, to try and mitigate rate increases in that particular system. So that's the focus of the body at this point, to identify larger capital expenditures or capital type expenditures. That would be used to help avoid long-term costs.
That that figure is somewhere above two million dollars, that true?
So the total amount that the town of East Hampton will receive is about three point seven eight million dollars. We have received half of our tranche, or one half of our payment at this point, it's sitting in the bank, so to speak. We'll receive the other payment sometime this summer, but overall, the town will receive three point seven eight million and change.
Who has the final approval on the projects that this money is?
The town council.
So the Board of Finance has lots of.
That is correct. In the final iteration, when the town council approved the very first allocation, one of the pieces of that resolution was a description in the was. Intend, it was very specific that the council decided to take that authority on themselves.
I think you do have a good point, Ted, that I think we all were sitting around here. Last year, asking ourselves the questions of how is that money going to be spent, and what are the implications for the future? And we have the money, we don't know the answer to that question, and that continues to have implications on the future, so. While we may not have direct input or say on any of this, I think it has implications upon our deliberations. And if there is some kind of draft or something, that may be helpful for us. Thing is, now we know what we can spend on, which we didn't know last year, we had some initial idea. Maybe beneficial for this board going forward, but I understand it's still being deliberated or.
It is, and I'll remind everyone in the room and those listening at home, that the. Rules, so to speak, around those allocations are that municipality is required to obligate those funds. Before the end of twenty twenty-four, so before December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Two years from now and change, we have to obligate those funds, so we have to make our decisions where we're going to use them, and then we have another two years to spend them. So, take that for what it's worth, I'm just reminding everybody. You, right, you may end up being in a position where you'd make that same statement again, because we haven't obligated all of our dollars. Thank you.
An additional question, so thank you for your thorough review, with the fuel costs. Now, I did some simple math, I probably got myself in trouble, when I assumed three dollars roughly of what fuel costs used to be, and then. Projected sixty-two thousand, that's a pretty substantial increase. Sixty percent, so how did, how did we come up with that figure? Does that really, and we have a thirty thousand dollar contingency in the budget, are we really saying it's a ninety thousand dollar contingency in the budget this year because of that?
Well, so I can tell you that, and Jeff may have some some comments to make on this, the Jeff Field, the finance director, may have some comments to make on. But I think that that figure was based on actual consumption by the town over time. As well, what we are paying now in terms of market. For, because now we are no longer within the the purchase contracts that we have. We've consumed all of the fuel that we had, right, we've consumed all the fuel that we had under those purchasing contracts. In our now-paying market rates, so it's market plus a little bit of a markup for delivery. So based on that activity, using today's information, as well as I recall Jeff and I talking about what happened. The last time the market did this to us with fuel in the oh eight or so, the two thousand eight timeframe, and what were the. Where did the fuel max out at that point, and to try and speculate. We're looking into the crystal ball as much as anybody else at this point and. Trying to make an estimation. You can certainly talk about that more, if you like, but that's how we came to those figures based on.
I think as we get into the week, it just be good to understand how you came up with that. To give an example, we were paying a dollar sixty-two for unleaded, we took a delivery on. March ninth, and it was three dollars fifty-three cents.
Three dollars and one.
Fifty-three cents, two dollars. Over about a hundred fifteen percent.
We can bring that back up, we can back to that. There's just so much to think about.
I have one question on the revenue side of things, and it's regarding the property for tax for the cars.
Sure.
So more than likely, that legislation probably won't be passed by the state legislature until after we have our referendum. What happens if it doesn't pass? Is the tax rates for the cars then staying at thirty-five point something, or? I think I know the answer, but it's funny here from you guys.
So. Let me, let me make a comment on two things, one of the reasons that the town council changed the deadline for referendum. Was to allow us to do it a little bit later, to try and get past the end of the legislative session.
I apologize, it's a break, it's a short session this year, they should be done.
So, let's hope, that notwithstanding, to perhaps the meat of your question, if that legislation fails. Then sort of the bets are off, because of course, we have to take that revenue away. And we have to decide. How we deal with. The very significant increase in the value of cars against a thirty-five or so dollar mill rate. And whether those are appropriate things together.
Well, I guess if I'm guessing, if we would get seven hundred thousand, I think it was from the state. Is leaving the mill rate at thirty-five for cars offset that, or is it even higher or more revenue for the town if we?
It's intended to be offsetting, although.
Yeah, we would end up with more revenue.
More revenue, yeah.
From the state.
If we left it at thirty-five point something.
Oh, that's right, the ketchup is next, the ketchup is next, yeah, we would, we would end up with more revenue at the thirty-five and change. So I think this is the year that it'll end up for a variety of reasons that will have a different mill rate for the two weeks. Or the overall mill rate is is a little bit higher. You got, you got a couple of months, we got a lot of work to do before we get there, right? Sir. I think you're next, I I'm jumping ahead, but I assume you're next.
So, I, oh, these are difficult economic facts.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, people are struggling with heating oil, fuel oil, groceries, and. What's going on in the world, it may get worse. And I worry about the ability of our residents to pay taxes. Our median household income in the last ten years has gone up. Only five thousand five hundred dollars, ten years ago, it was ninety thousand dollars. And last year, it was nine, ninety-five thousand five hundred. That's quite amazing to me, when over that same period. The, our budget has increased about twelve million dollars. So, I want anybody who's listening at home, whatever, people to understand. That we will keep that in mind, and, you know, we're all feeling the same bite. And we understand what's going on in your homes and in your pockets. Thank you. Is, are we, any final comments for anyone? Hey, motion to adjourn. Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.